Evening. It is now 5:45 and the regular meeting for the City Council is now in order. Mayor, Madam City Clerk, roll call. In a moment of silence, please. Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilperson Zarita Galvin McCoy here. Mayor Protem Sharif here.
I would like to ask for a special, just please, to present.
Sure.
Yes.
Also, the House of Representatives, you're speaking from your service office. Also, that's your job, so we can talk about this. Please.
Will Pastor Tulis please come forth for the Congresswoman? Deidra?
Good evening. I'm KW Tulis, standing here today on behalf of our wonderful Congresswoman Annette Baragon. I'm here today to pay homage to one who means so much to many of the residents here in the city of Compton, and I want to also say thank you for just pouring so much in me. With me being here for the last 20 months, you have made my job easy, and I want to say thank you so much. So I'm here today to present a certificate of congressional recognition presented to you, Ms. Deidra Duhart, in recognition of your strong works ethnic and commitment to Transamerica Occidental Life Insurance Company. Thank you for the 30 years of leadership and service you provided to that organization, and the Congresswoman would like to applaud you for your dedication to the city of Compton and the state of California for the years of public services that you have provided here. Wishing you good health and happiness in your retirement. Signed, this day, July 24, 2018, from the Congresswoman Annette Diaz-Baragon. Thank you.
Thank you to Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. I'm here on behalf of State Senator Stephen Bradford. We also have a Senate certificate of recognition acknowledging your years of service to the great city of Compton. It says, "Congratulations on your retirement from the city of Compton. You have been a valuable asset to the former Councilwoman as well as Councilwoman Sharif in your role as a council liaison. You have represented the Councilwoman with dignity and respect, and have been effective in running the overall operation of the Councilwoman's office. I wish you great success in whatever your plans are in retirement. Relax and do the things you always wanted to do but never had time." You.
And I'm going to present this one on behalf of the California Legislature Assemblyman Mike Gibson, and it's a certificate of recognition presented to Deidra Duhart in recognition of your dedication and commitment to eight years of outstanding public service to the beautiful city of Compton. I commend you on your professionalism, professional devotion, and loyalty to the council, residents, and community. Your efforts have truly created an impact in the city. I applaud you on this momentous accomplishment and commend you on your next chapter of life. And it says, "Congratulations, Mike A. Gibson, Assemblyman, 64th District." Thank you.
Now, we have one more, and this is from the city of Compton. Proudly recognize Deidra M. Duhart, public service employee from 2010 to 2018. In recognition of your exceptional customer service and the outstanding contributions you have consistently provided to the city of Compton, we wish you success and happiness throughout your well-deserved retirement. Signed, July 24, 2018, by Mayor Angie Brown, Janice Zarita from District 1, Isaac Galvin District 2, Tana McCoy District 3, and Emma Sharif District 4. I just want to say, give me an opportunity to please take this time and say, "Deidra, I really appreciate all that you've done to make sure that my office ran in the manner that you know that I wanted it to run. You did an exceptional job." And I, and people keep looking at me saying, "Well, what you gonna do now?" I say, "I have no idea." But I really want to thank you because without you, I could not have done none of the things that I've done, and I really want you to know how much I do appreciate you. Thank you.
Deidra, again, congratulations. I thank you. When I first went into the council, you were there for me, you helped me along the way, and you're greatly, greatly appreciated. You will be missed, but enjoy this next chapter of life.
Well, I just wish you would take me with you. You know, I just want to say, Deidra, that you were truly an asset to the City Council's second floor of City Hall, and when I came here, you were here, and, you know, I could always run to you. But our relationship will continue because the Duharts are District 1 residents, so congratulations. Enjoy and just live life. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk? Madam City Clerk, would you like to say something, please? You and the city attorney?
Well, Deidra, I'm not gonna miss you because this is not the end of us. We're, we're, we actually, I'm not supposed to say this, but we actually, I share her husband with her, so her husband is my boyfriend, so... That's, that's our running joke, you know? I got jokes, so don't, don't take that and run with it and put it on Facebook and everywhere else, but as long as she accepts it, we don't, we all, well, we good. So, but, you know, I love you. You're my sister, and this is not the end of us, so enjoy your retirement. Wait for me because I'm coming.
Okay.
Deidra, this isn't something that's given. This is something that's earned, and you have definitely earned it. The job was not easy, but you lasted till the end, and enjoy your time, and have a great retirement. All right.
And we most certainly want to allow our city manager to say something because, as you know, she also worked for him as well.
I want to be short like myself. Deidra, I can honestly tell you that you're one of the hardest-working liaisons we have. Without you, without you, Councilwoman would be all over the place. We, we know you're her right hand, and I appreciate you, she appreciates you, we all appreciate you, we're gonna miss you. I still have your number, it's 310, and I'm gonna be calling you, so congratulations.
So again, thank you, Deidra.
And we would like to take pleasure with our Deidras. Pastor Tulis and also Dara Swin.
I just want to tell everyone that it has truly been a pleasure to work for the city of Compton. I enjoy customer service. I, I, it's my forte, and I've always, for the last 30 years, I have been in customer service, and it, it, it's a, it gives you great pride and, and just pleasure to know that, at the end of the day, you helped someone. There's an issue that needed to be resolved, and you were able to get that issue resolved for the constituent. So I love it. I hate to leave, but I gotta go. And for those of you, I will be joining the Dollarhide seniors, so get ready. Thank you.
It's now, it's time for our audience comments, and the first person would be Ms. Oliphill.
Thank you, indeed. It's a pleasure to be a part of this program today and for you to have, for her to retire from working with you, so I think she deserved another hand. And I'd like to say that Community Care, the Compton Business Chamber, the Compton Initiative, YAL, we had a wonderful program, gardening program, at 700 North Alameda this past Saturday. Very successful, and volunteers from the community, we want to thank you. People came from out of state. I want to say that, that gardening program there started, really, at Walton Middle School a number of years ago, and you will see on Green Leaf in Wilmington, you will see what at the, at the wall there, there's a wall with Frank Walton, Cedric Chavez, and Martin of the King. So we were there for a number of years, moving there to 700 North Alameda, and Saturday was a very successful, and the gardening program is known all over the country, by the way. It's organic, and the, and the person that's really in charge is a young lady that's seven years old. They're from seven to 17 there. I just want you to know that, and thank you so much for allowing all this to happen. Thank you.
Sheila Smith?
I'm Sheila Smith, and Jackie Venders is with me. We're a member of the Commission for a Better Compton, and we're here to announce a community event that's gonna take place on September 8th at the Compton YAL, 700 North Alameda. We gave flyers out, there's flyers in your foyer. We're having a resource fair. It's gonna cover jobs, college preparation, medical attention, everything that we can think of that's gonna be there, and we're inviting the community as well as yourself to come out and be a part.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce Kelly?
Good evening. I am Joyce Kelly, and I do live in the 3rd District. First off, there'd been maybe a rumor floating around town that the president of Compton Chamber of Commerce wants to have, or is going to have, a baby shower for Asia Brown at the Dollarhide Center. The Dollarhide Center was built with tax revenue bonds. Yeah, I forgot, but I have the papers to prove it, and I know the bonds were sold or redistributed, but still, those city, the citizens, the senior citizens were told when those bonds were issued, it was going to be for a senior center, and it was built with lease revenue. I want to know, if this occurs, are you guys going to approve it? Because it should go across the dis for approval. Anything that happens in that center, it's the city's, it's supposed to bring in revenue, should be approved. Doesn't matter who it is. I see and hear when people want to use the center for a repass or something, it comes across the dis. And you guys have let her have too much power, and she's, as you can see, if you don't see, you must be blind, how she's run the city into the ground. The city not only looks bad, it's dirty, and in some areas, it smells bad. So how are you going to celebrate a baby shower in a building that's supposed to generate revenue possibly to help clean this city up? But you need to think about that. Someone said, maybe she could call it a state-of-the-womb address, but seriously, I don't know. It, it should be the city manager's decision to bring it to the council in this fashion. But there's so much going on in this city that is wrong that you people need to straighten it up. I see here on this agenda where your item number 11 is travel request for black Congressional Legislative Caucus, and it has members Isaac Galvin, Tana McCoy, and Emma Sharif. Now, Isaac Galvin has not been representing the city well when he goes to these conferences, and then I don't understand why he would want to go to a black congressional caucus. Think about it. He charges alcohol to the city, and you keep giving him permission or grant him money to travel on our money, and he's misrepresenting us. Thank you.
That is the end of our audience comments. Madam City Clerk?
It's now time for the 5:35 PM public hearing for the 2018-19 Consolidated Action Plan. It's item number 13 on your agenda. We need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Mayor Protem and Council...
Roll call. Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Council, this item will be presented by Ms. Annette Potts and accompanied by Mr. Lawrence Adams for the hearing.
Good eve, good evening. The public hea, the purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public to provide input on the city's consolidated annual action plan for fiscal year 2018-2019. The consolidated plan was made available to the public from June 27th until July 27th. We're right now going through the review period. During this term, we haven't received any comments or negative input on the plan. The city expects to get 1.5 million in community development block grant funds, and we expect to have 1.3 million in home program funds. The consolidated plan is also an application for funding, which is due to HUD August 15th, which is why we're presenting this to the City Council on tonight because we need that approval in order to move forward since there's no meetings next month. The consolidated plan also entails how the city proposes to use funds for next year for CDBG and the home program, and that's listed, well, it's listed in your item. It's on item 13, in item 13. So we're requesting that City Council open the public hearing and entertain input from the public.
Thank you. Is it, we, we can open, it's already open?
It's open.
Thank you. So, are you finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
It's, audience comments?
I'm just getting ready, I'm getting ready to ask.
All the mics are kinda low.
Yes.
I can barely hear what you're saying.
Are there any comments from the audience? Thank you.
Question, Ms. Potts, CBD money for the streets, right?
Right, no. You have to talk into the mic. You have to talk into the mic.
Oh, sorry. CBD money for the streets, correct?
No, they're streets, streets are not eligible. That's what I'm talking about.
This is for startup money?
One moment, Ms. Potts.
What's up? Ms. Potts, can you come up?
Could you please come up?
On this side.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Could you, could you please come to the mic here so this way you can be able to, so they can face the, the council?
Madam Mayor, Protem, I, members of the City Council. The question has to do with funds for street improvements that are part of the CDBG allocation for 2018-19. We have provided separately approximately $2.6 million for street improvements, which are funded by the Section 108 program. So those funds that are for the street improvements are provided, the funding is, the specific source of that funding is really coming from fund balance out of the Section 108 program, which is companion piece to the community development block grant, and those funds have already been allocated in the city budget.
So, Ms. Potts, I understood, I was the commissioner during this presentation. Question, Ms. Potts, I did understand that it was for HUD low-income housing or properties, low-income people, streets?
Ms. Potts, you have to come to the, to the mic. They can't hear you back there.
Ms. Potts, you wanna?
Hello, I'm sorry. The activities that are listed in this, in this plan for this year do not include street improvements, but street improvements are an eligible activity. The city is proposing to do street improvements with other funding.
All right, thanks.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman people, and I wanted to thank Deidra for all her committed and loyal service to the city of Compton. My name is Saul Figueroa. I'm the program manager for Enidol Family Centers, Building Stronger Families here in Compton, and I wanted to thank the Federal Grants Advisory Committee that spent a lot of time and energy to review the proposals. I want to thank the City Council for their ongoing support of Enidol Family Centers, and I would just like to make one recommendation that we, in the future, if we could get the, all the funded agencies to come together and maybe had a one-location, like a one-stop center where the community could come and access all these funded resources, and one of the things that I know that at Chavez High School right here in Wilmington, the city of, I mean, the Compton United School Board vacated the buildings there, and they are looking for tenants. It would be a great place to have like a family resource center, community resource center, where all the funded agencies got together and, and we could cross-referral with one another so that we could have a comprehensive approach on meeting the needs of our community members here in Compton. I say that not only as a program manager for Enidol Family Centers, but as a proud homeowner and resident of the 3rd District here in Compton. Thank you very much.
Lyn Boon, city of Compton. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know your name. Annette Potts. Okay. Well, number one, I mean, I know everyone picked up, well, most of the people here picked up the agenda on the table, which really doesn't have anything in it, it's just the title, and since this is a public hearing, it would have been nice if you guys had a PowerPoint presentation to break this down so the people would know, you know, what you're talking about, and the other thing is that it was maybe about a month ago, the city manager had a notice outside that he was addressing the housing program of the HUD fund, that there was gonna be a correction made, excuse me, in the housing program, so, which addressed the funding source from the CDBU or whatever of this program, and he never came back with anything to put up there to say how it had changed, and, you know, I was concerned with that, so I know that affects this and how you're gonna be distributing those funds. I never saw the change, and I was looking for that, but what I'm saying is that a PowerPoint presentation would have really helped the people in the audience and would have helped me as well, so I think maybe, you know, the next time, if you're gonna have a public hearing, it should be a little more visible for, for all of us to know, to really make a satisfying comment on it. Thank you.
Can you go back for more questions? Ms. Potts, question. I understood that the CBD funding will be used for public...
Right, no. You already spoken, so please. Thank you. Are the, Ms. Kelly?
I agree with Ms. Boon. I just got a copy of this on my phone about the organizations, and some of them I've heard of because you continually give money every year to the same ones, but I see this one, Compton Parks Improvement. Some of this needs to be explained about what it is, but my chief concern is Compton Senior Citizen Program for $118,500. Did you hear that, people? Because the thing is, we knew there was money for the seniors, but it was never, I've never seen it put here before.
Hello, I'm sorry. The activities that are listed in this, in this plan for this year do not include street improvements. But street improvements are an eligible activity. The city is proposing to do street improvements with other funding.
All right, thanks.
Good afternoon, councilwoman's people. And I wanted to thank Deidra for all her committed and loyal service to the city of Compton. My name is Saul Figueroa. I'm the program manager for Enidol Family Centers, Building Stronger Families here in Compton. And I wanted to thank the Federal Grants Advisory Committee that spent a lot of time and energy to review the proposals. I want to thank the city council for their ongoing support of Enidol Family Centers. And I would just like to make one recommendation that we, in the future, if we could get the, all the funded agencies to come together and maybe had a one location, like a one-stop center where the community could come and access all these funded resources. And one of the things that I know that at Chavez High School right here on Wilmington, the city of, I mean, the Compton United School Board vacated the buildings there, and they are looking for tenants. It would be a great place to have like a family resource center, community resource center, where all the funded agencies got together and, and we could cross-referral with one another so that we could have a comprehensive approach on meeting the needs of our community members here in Compton. I say that not only as a program manager for Enidol Family Centers, but as a proud homeowner and resident of the third district here in Compton. Thank you very much.
Lynn Boone, City of Compton. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know your name. And that's Potts. Okay. Well, number one, I mean, I know everyone picked up, well, most of the people here picked up the agenda on the table, which really doesn't have anything in it, it's just the title. And since this is a public hearing, it would have been nice if you guys had a PowerPoint presentation to break this down, so the people would know, you know, what you're talking about. And the other thing is that it was maybe about a month ago, the city manager had a notice outside that he was addressing the housing program of the HUD fund, that there was going to be a correction made, excuse me, in the housing program. So, which addressed the funding source from the CDBU or whatever of this program. And he never came back with anything to put up there to say how it had changed. And, you know, I was concerned with that. So I know that affects this, and how you're going to be distributing those funds. I never saw the change, and I was looking for that. But what I'm saying is that a PowerPoint presentation would have really helped the people in the audience, and would have helped me as well. So I think maybe, you know, the next time, if you're going to have a public hearing, it should be a little more visible for, for all of us to know, to really make a satisfying comment on it. Thank you.
Can you go back for more questions? Ms. Potts, question. I understood that the CBD funding will be used for public?
Right name. You already spoken, so please. Thank you. Are the, Ms. Kelly?
I agree with Ms. Boone, I just got a copy of this on my phone, about the organizations. And some of them I've heard of, because you continually give money every year to the same ones. But I see this one, Compton Parks Improvement. Some of this needs to be explained about what it is. But my chief concern is Compton Senior Citizen Program for one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Did you hear that, people? Because the thing is, we knew there was money for the seniors, but it was never, I've never seen it put here before. And I, I need to know, we need to know, what is this money? What does it mean? I see it on paper, but exactly what does it mean? What is it there for? Is there an organization with this name that we know nothing about? Is there some way you can explain that to us? Is it going to mean that we no longer have to pay thirteen or fifteen dollars for lunch at Dollar Hide Center? Well, it's a hearing, and usually when you go to a hearing, now this is what I don't understand, you guys call it a hearing, but yet we hardly ever get any answers, just like when we come up here to talk. But we need some answers, there are some people looking. And the seniors are the ones who pay. They built this city. They've been so disrespected. I'm only trying to ask questions. I know it's not enough to buy a bus, it needs another bus over there. Thank you.
Please, Ms., yes.
Okay, as far as the senior citizen program, it's going to be implemented in-house by city employees. And what the city proposes to do is to offer training to its senior citizens at, at, I'm not sure the exact location, but it's going to be where the seniors are, in one of the senior locations. So they're at Dollar Hide. So what they'll be offering is computer training, other training on technology, like scan, telephones, different technology that seniors might not be aware of or right now using. They'll probably offer, they'll probably offer it on a quarterly basis. We'll go to where the seniors are, and we'll see who's interested in participating, and it will be offered free of charge.
They have programs, is it for salaries?
Excuse me?
They have some of those programs over there, is this for salary?
This will be, yes.
For the contractors?
No, for city staff, because city staff will be running the program. Thank you. Are there any other audience comments? And regarding this public hearing? If not, we have a motion to pause.
Good evening, my name is Martha Barajas. I just have a question, is this for nonprofits? Okay, do you guys have a list of the people who submitted applications? Do you guys have a list of the people who submitted applications?
Yes, we do.
And how can we get a copy of it? Because I see people that we never see here, only when they want grant funds.
Can I, can I explain the process?
No, I just want to know where the, the list is. You don't have to explain the process. It's too late if I want to apply, or the organization wants to apply.
Well, just for your information, we open up, we advertise every December that there are funds available. And you're available, I mean, you're, you can obtain the application and put in a proposal at that time.
Where do you advertise, since you?
In the city's newspaper.
What newspaper?
The Compton Bulletin.
Okay, so where can I get a list of the nonprofits who submitted an application?
Okay.
Okay, what?
If I can release that information, I will. Okay. He said I can release it, so I will.
Okay, I'll sit back there and wait for it.
What was your question?
Where do I get a list for the nonprofits who submitted an application for the grants?
I think there's a communication problem here. I don't think people can hear each other. I mean, because I'm having, I'm struggling trying to keep up.
Well, she's, I believe what Martha's asking for is a list of all the nonprofits that actually applied for the CBD grant, is that what you're asking?
That's correct.
That's correct. Which went before AFGAB, and that was done, she was saying that she, they ran it, they advertised it in December. Now, AFGAB should have finished the process, I think, around about in February. And then they're selected then. So there is information in the back, in our backup material regarding it. But if you want to, Mr. City, Ms. Madam City Clerk, can they get a list of that information from your office? Mrs. City Attorney?
I would recommend that a public records request be made to the clerk's office, and we would provide, to the extent possible by law, all public documents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other comments in regarding this consolidated action plan? Thank you. Motion to pause.
Just a moment, second.
Madam City Clerk?
On roll call, Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvons McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharie?
Yes.
Council comments on the hearing?
Um, yeah. Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions. So, based on what Ms. Barajas was asking, two things. I think, one, who submitted an application should be public information. And two, people that were granted should be public information. But where I have my issue is, I sit on the council, and I don't, I don't, I'm not going to swear by it, but I don't even think I was notified as to when applications are made available to solicit the community and nonprofits to actually apply, apply for the money. So I think in the future, we need to do a better job, because I know you're, you're new to this community, but we don't have a newspaper, we don't have a Compton Bulletin. So my second question is, is it, does it have to be, is there any requirements for notification to the people? Does it have to be in a newspaper that's actually circulated in the community? Does it have to be posted at the library? Does it have to be posted at City Hall? Does it have to be posted in the clerk's office? I'm just curious as to, are there any requirements as to how the notification has to be no, uh, put out to the people? I don't care who answer, whoever want to answer. Yes. So, the city is required to publicize?
Hold the mic down.
The city is required to publicize the notice of availability, and they do in December of each year. We also publicize the availability of this consolidated plan, which does list all the programs and the nonprofits that apply for funding are listed in the plan. We made the plan available for thirty days to the public to review it. So the information is in the plan. We delivered it to the clerk's office, the library's office, the city manager's office, and it's in the grant division. We also put an advertisement on the city's website.
So my question is, what are the requirements?
To, to process, to do a notice of availability in the city's newspaper.
So what, what is our city's newspaper? What newspaper did you put it in?
I wasn't here. So as far, I only know Compton Bulletin. I'm not sure which one.
But you, I mean, don't tell me you wasn't here, because, because surely, I would hope, that if you're working a, a plan, that you would know that it was publicized properly. I mean, just because you wasn't here, that doesn't, that's no excuse.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to find out for the people, and for myself, so next year, when it comes up, how do we know, how do you remind us that it's time to apply? And what are the requirements to notify the people?
It's going to be publicized in the city's local paper. I'm not, I thought it was the Compton Bulletin. I'm not sure what the name of it is, but it has to be the city's local paper.
So does it have to be a paper that circulates in the city? Because we don't have a local paper, unless you guys can tell me that, what our local paper is.
Mayor Pro Tem, can I?
Yes.
Jump in. The publication requirements is that it has to be in a paper of general circulation. The Compton Bulletin has qualified as our paper. They have not lost that designation as the newspaper of general circulation for the city. Now, I think to call it the city's paper is debatable. The legal requirement, the Compton Bulletin does satisfy.
So it doesn't have to be a paper that's circulating in the community? Or does it?
No.
Okay.
No. Please don't speak from the audience.
Ms. Boone, hold, hold on.
How long is the notice of availability? For thirty days. So it will give you an opportunity to request an application and submit it, and it should include a deadline for submission of applications or proposals for funding.
And then do you, so do you post it? Is it like, are other public hearings and notifications where you have to go in the library and outside, and like three or four different places or something?
Not for the notice of availability of funds, that one.
So, so just basically, folks just need to keep up with the December timeline if they're interested? You need to mark your own calendar, set your, your phone to notify you next December. That's what I would suggest, because based on a newspaper, city newspaper, it ain't happening. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I also have a question. When you said that the, the funds that are going to the senior programs, and it's strictly paying salaries, are we hiring new people to administer these programs, or is paying the salaries of the employees that are already there? That's what I need to know.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of the city council, this is one of the items that we went over in the budget presentation with, with council. We, and we went over these allocations for the block grant as part of the budget presentation. The senior citizen program specifically is one of the programs that we said would be funded as a part of the maintenance of Career Link at their existing site. So they're, they are being given the responsibility for the implementation of the senior citizen program, and that's why on page two of the annual action plan, it shows that that is an in-house program. So the city is not hiring any outside employees, we're not hiring any outside consultants to work on the senior citizen program. That is a program for the benefit of our senior citizens. It will operate primarily out of Dollar Hide Center, and it will be the extension of free services to increase the technology awareness and proficiency of senior citizens. It is something that the seniors actually asked for. They asked for greater tech, technology training, and this gave us an opportunity to be responsive to one of their, their requests.
Mr. Adams, thank you so much.
That's just for one program? The hundred and some thousand dollars?
Yes, this is for the senior technology program.
That's the computer program in the computer room?
This is a new activity that will involve training for the seniors to actually teach them how to use the technology. We have computers available in a number of different places in the city, including at the Career Link. We have a large computer lab right in the lobby of Career Link. But we're going to be providing training at multiple locations. But the primary senior program in the city operates out of Dollar Hide Center. And so this, the primary target of this will be through the Dollar Hide Center.
At what other locations?
All the parks, and also at seven hundred Bulleus Road, Career Link.
And so, so, that's fine. I mean, you, so the money is for equipment or for salaries?
Salaries.
So you're going to hire several people?
No, they're already working.
Oh, these are existing programs?
Existing personnel that will be working on this program.
Are we buying any new equipment, any new technology?
At the present time, we are not, because we have sufficient materials already available. If we determine there's a need to add based on the program demands, we will. But there's a computer lab at Dollar Hide Center, there's a computer lab at the seven hundred Bulleus Road. So we have existing technology centers that are set up in the city. What we're not doing is staffing those centers and providing a schedule of, of training opportunities where people can actually come in and take advantage of learning how to optimize the use of those resources. This program will provide us with the ability to, to provide those actual training services.
So, you know, I'm going to have fifty seniors call me between tonight and morning, so I just want to make sure I understand and pass the, the word on to them. So what's the dollar amount?
For the senior program, one hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
And that's going to be divided between how many employees?
The, predominantly, funds will be divided, a small, mostly two-program staff members will predominantly, those funds will predominantly fund their, their salaries.
So that's in addition to their salary they make now, or is this their total salary?
That's to cover their total salary. This doesn't raise their salaries, no one's getting a raise. But the funds that would have funded those salaries is no longer available.
So the, the technology person makes about sixty thousand dollars, or fifty-five thousand dollars?
Well, see, with benefits.
Oh, that's including benefits?
Yes.
Okay, so that's including benefits. So why are we talking about this, if you know? So the computer lab at Dollar Hide is about six years old. Do we still have the same computers over there? Do, do we still have account for all of those?
There, there are resources that are available to be utilized. And if we determine more resources need to go in, we'll bring that information to council and ask you to, to supplement that. At the present time, this is a new activity that we're putting in. We don't know that we're going to need additional hardware. We don't know that we're going to need additional computers, because we have computers at several existing locations. We also intend to conduct classes at satellite operations in parks in the city. So we have the ability to teach technology, not only on the desktop computers, but also on laptop computers. Much, much, much like in a classroom, they predominantly use last, laptop computers as opposed to desktops.
Okay, well, you know, I'm, I'm excited, but, you know, I don't want to rain on the parade, but most of our parks don't even have Wi-Fi. So I don't know if you guys have done an inventory or a survey, but I know Gonzalez Park, for one, does not have any Wi-Fi.
Yes.
The, the staff people can't even get emails at the parks.
And that's one of the wonderful things that you've actually approved as part of the city budget for that, for the extension of Wi-Fi services for all city facilities. So... So, that work has already begun in terms of expanding the existing Wi-Fi services in the city.
Oh, good.
And so, that will be available at all city facilities.
Good, and I just hope we follow through, because we have gone through this before in my tenure here, so we were gonna implement Wi-Fi at the parks, and, you know, it just falls through the cracks. So, hopefully, we follow through and we do get Wi-Fi at the parks.
I believe it is being done as we speak, Madam.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we're now at the public hearing.
No, I will reserve my comments. I just came in on the tail end, so I can ask my questions with staff.
Okay, thank you. So, now, I'm trying to meet no time here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Consent items are routine and expected to be...
We need to close the hearing.
I'm sorry. Do we need to close the hearing?
The hearing is already closed.
Okay, okay.
Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at what time without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
I'm gonna just request that two and three be pulled. Oh, uh, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm gonna request that two and three be pulled for discussion.
Yes, ma'am. For discussion?
Okay.
Madam City Clerk?
We will call on the remaining items.
Okay, roll call.
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvain?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with All-Star Interpreting Services for provisions of Spanish language interpretation and translating services for city's legislative bodies for fiscal year 2018-19 in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Our second discussion?
Second.
Mr. City Manager, could you, actually, Madam City Clerk, do you mind just giving a summary of this item? And I don't know if Mr. City Manager of you would like to weigh in on this item as well?
This particular item provides Spanish translation of the entire City Council meeting, so the public, the audience, have the ability to hear the meeting transcribed in Spanish.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any additional discussion?
You know, my only concerns are that I see that, I mean, you know, I know the work is done, but based on, my actions are based on the audit and the audit report, and the audit talked about no-bid contracts. So, I know that there were three quotes that were given, and so, you know, I just, me myself, you know, I, I just have to be, I have to be careful what I vote on. So, I just, I want to follow the process, and I want to follow the recommendations of the auditors. And based on what the audit said, the contracts that are coming from the city manager's office are all being sent out for RFP, even though there were some that we called in the past, special professional service contracts. But I just want to follow the recommendations of the auditor, so that's my only concerns about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
The only thing I can add, Mayor and Council, is that I appreciate the clerk getting the three informal quotes. The only thing that is missing from the quotes is what the actual quotes were. So, if we bring that back with the quotes, that will probably suffice on this particular item.
But now, we need to be clear, are we doing quotes on anything over thirty-five hundred dollars, what our policy says? Are we doing bids? Are we doing RFPs?
So, over five thousand dollars, there should be a bid for that, right? So, she could get, and she can get a quote on this, because it's a professional services agreement?
So, do we have a policy for professional service and a policy for contracts? Do we have two separate policies?
Mr. City Attorney, do you mind weighing in?
I believe, I believe that four point five of our standard operating manual would cover this resolution and allow for the bids.
These are quotes?
The quotes, I'm sorry. Not formal bidding, but quotes.
So, my question was, do we have a policy for professional service contracts and a policy for contracts?
Mr. City Attorney, do you mind just answering the question? Councilwoman?
I'm not sure what you mean by a policy for contracts. But we have...
I mean, I would think the city attorney, I'm asking the city attorney.
So, well, my question is, in the past, we talked about professional service contracts. The auditor says that we need to do bids for contracts. So, I just want to follow one policy. So, do, so my question to you is, do we have a professional service contract policy, and do we have a contract policy?
Yes, both. For this item is four point five of the standard operating manual, and chapter four of the Compton Municipal Code covers professional services and our procurement.
And it only applies to that item? You say?
And it does apply to this item?
It does apply to this item.
Yes. Not only apply, but it does apply.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
What's the controller's policy? Because she's the one that pays the bills, right? Can I get the, can you call up the controller and ask her what her policy is?
I can call the controller up with the policy that we follow, I have it here in the fiscal policy. So, there's a competitive bidding policy and a purchasing policy in the financial policies and procedures manual here, and I think that's what Mr. Cornwall was quoting from.
I'd like to hear what she said, if that's okay, what she thinks.
Yeah, because I don't think there's two policies.
There's one policy that we all follow.
Are you finished?
The controller's on her way.
Yeah, no, I wasn't finished, I was talking.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The SOM, I'm not clear exactly what that one says, but we, in my office, we have a financial policies and also looking at the municipal code. They are very vague. They cover services, they cover services, they don't specifically say professional services, and they don't distinguish between the two. So, you would just actually lump them in together until we actually update the policies to actually make them separate so that it's clear.
So, what was the last thing you said? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, it's hard to hear.
It said, "Our policies are vague. They are written where it actually says services. It's nothing that says specifically professional services versus services." So, they cover the both of them until, unless, until we actually update the policies to make them clear, professional services versus regular services.
Okay, so, so you're a part of the audit team, correct?
Yes.
The team that we talk about, I hear you guys talk about the audit team.
Correct.
So, in your professional service, what do you think? Do you think we have a policy for professional service contracts as well as contracts, or do we need to bring a policy back? Do you think we're operating on one now, or do we have one on the books or not? Because, see, when, you guys have to understand my question, and it's nothing personal with the attorney, the clerk, or you or anybody, but when I vote on things, I have to be clear, and I have to feel comfortable with them myself, because I sat through a three-month trial, and the city attorney was never called to the stand. Not this man, not Mr. Cornwall, but the who was sitting, the city attorney. So, to just say that it is and say that it isn't, I think, what my practice now is, I'm practicing on policies that are written, that are filed, that we can pull out the cabinet. So, we don't have a professional service policy as far as you're concerned.
Barring what the SOM says in that paragraph, I'm not sure what that one says, but for all the other policies that I'm looking at, the municipal code and the financial policies that are in our office that's been adopted by council, it does not specify between the two. So, it's just lumped in together.
Okay, so, what, and what does that, what does that process entail?
That one is anything over twenty-five thousand has bids.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Galvain, you finished?
It's been changed to five thousand.
Can, can I?
Do you mind reading it, since some people have read it, some people have not?
Yeah, it's, under the Financial Policies Procedures Manual, Section Nine, Purchasing Policy, nine point five point one, the purchase orders in the amount of five thousand dollars of marsh will be submitted to the City Council by resolution prior to being executed. Purchase orders do not require adoption by resolution if they are, and there's four exceptions. For an amount less than five thousand dollars, be properly approved by the city manager and/or other required staff, and it has to meet all these requirements, applied to an existing appropriation, meaning the money was already appropriated, and fulfill in whole or in part a budgeted expenditure as adopted by the City Council in the combined budget resolution for the current fiscal year. In other words, the money's in this current fiscal year. One of the things that, when you look at these two items, they're actually contracts. We have to sign a contract, there's a scope of work for these two. All we're asking, just like the professional services agreement we're doing with the federal, the federal lobbyist, or the state lobbyist, those were professional services that we bid out. We did RFPs, and we came back with quotes on those. So, this is the same type of thing, where you have a contract, they're thirty-five thousand dollars, and we're just asking for a competitive process. I don't know when the last time the person that does the minutes was bid out, but I think just to err on the side of caution, we might want to certainly consider that, given the fact that we are under scrutiny by the state controller's office.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I had one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Since this is the last meeting, and we're off for, what, about five weeks, what's the downfall of just sending it out to bid, having it come back when we come back in September, and voting on it then? We don't have no meetings before then. And the translation is something that I pushed for when I got elected, because when I first got elected, the council meetings were only in English, the agendas, the agendas weren't in Spanish, so it's something that I pushed for. But I don't know if there's a big rush to approve it today. I think we can bring it back and do it the first meeting in September after bid it out.
Is there any issues?
I'm sorry, I could not hear her response. I would like to hear her response. I would like to know if, how this may impact her office, that's what I'm waiting for. So, if she could respond to that, so I could hear, I would appreciate it.
Madam City Clerk? I said I'm good. Whatever council chooses to do, if you come back in September, you come back in September.
Okay.
If it doesn't, I'm good?
Okay.
So, so that I'm clear, we're gonna go, have the city clerk go out to bid for both of the contracts, like, both of the services.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think the translation service, there are three informal quotes on that, so if we had what those quotes were in that staff report, that would suffice, I believe.
Then if there was suffice for that one, why are we holding?
Are they solicited quotes, or are they just two people that just submitted a quote, because you told them to submit a quote?
I can't speak for the, I would imagine they were solicited quotes informally, so make phone calls, same thing we do on bids for a thousand dollars or more. You just call up and say, hey, what's your bid for servicing?
But this is not a thousand, this is thirty-five thousand. Big difference.
Okay.
Big difference from three bids on who's gonna cater a lunch at the Dollar Height Center to thirty-five thou, two thirty-five thousand dollar contracts.
The processes are the same.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, we'll pull this item and if we can include the...
Withdraw your motion, and McCoy withdraw.
So moved, I withdraw my motion.
I will draw my motion. And so, just to return, in September, we'll list the bid amounts with the staff report? Is that the request from the council?
Yes. Yes.
All righty.
I'm assuming item number three for the minutes is being pulled as well?
For the same reason.
Yes. Item number eleven is under the city manager's report request to travel to the Black Caucus, Black Congressional Caucus for September the twelfth through the sixteenth, Washington, DC. Counselperson Galvain, McCoy, and Sharif.
So moved. Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I had, one second, please. I want to withdraw myself from attending this conference, because I didn't realize, I thought it was in August, I didn't realize it was September, and I have something already scheduled that weekend. And I don't think there's anything wrong with me wanting to attend the Black Congressional Legislative Caucus. One of the speakers earlier came and said, why would I want to attend that? Because I represent a very diverse community of African-Americans, Hispanics, Samoans, and different nationalities that make the city of Compton the great city that it is. So, I would love to go to this conference, but the only problem is I already have something scheduled for that weekend, so I would like to withdraw myself from being able to attend it. And I would like the city manager and the staff to provide the same opportunity for this entire body to attend if their schedules permit, the Latino Congressional Legislative Caucus as well.
So, do we need a motion to withdraw?
Do we need a motion to withdraw him?
You can amend the motion to not include the councilman.
Okay.
Do you need a motion for that amendment? So, motion. Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvain?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
City attorneys' reports?
Do we need one on the...
I'm sorry, on the original motion.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvain?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor and City Council, we have an item being proposed for a closed session discussion, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Blair versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number BC 674330 pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9A.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvain?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number thirteen, under New Business, is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, adopting and authorizing the submission of the Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Year 2018-19 Consolidated Annual Action Plan and Use of Funds for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partner Grant Programs.
So moved.
Discussion? Mr. City Manager, could you just give a quick summary of this item?
Yes, this is the, Mayor and Council, this is the accompaniment of the public hearing that we had earlier. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that the city of Compton, or any city that is receiving these funds, prepare an annual action plan for each of the five years covered by Compton's consolidated five-year plan, which was 2015 to 2020. The consolidated plan regulations combine into a single submission to Housing and Urban Development, the planning and application elements of the Community Development Block Grant, and the Home Investment Partnership Grant Home Funds. Grant, and the Home Investment Partnership Grant Home Funds. The city produces an annual, uh, action plan, uh, to ensure its eligibility for these particular funds. HUD's fiscal year 2018, 2019 federal grant allocations for Compton are one point five, uh, just over one point five million dollars in CDBG funds and six hundred and four thousand and change in home funds. The city also received home program income in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars from loan payoffs, uh, which increased the amount of available home activities to one point three million, uh, just over one point three million dollars. In accordance with the HUD requirements, uh, and consistent with cities con, uh, the city's consolidated five-year plan, the staff prepared the draft, uh, 2018, 2019 Annual Action Plan, and on March seventh, a public hearing was held, uh, before the Federal Grants Advisory Board, FGA, uh, to discuss and receive comments on housing and community development needs of the community.
Thank you, Mister City Manager. Any discussion?
Um, just for the people, where is our, uh, grants department at now, where they can find out about the home?
They are located, uh, right now, they're located in, uh, Carrilink, seven hundred North Bulleus, um, and we are planning to move them to City Hall.
But right now, they're at?
Right now, they're at seven hundred, yes.
Seven hundred, so, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is a resolution of the city council, City of Compton, accepting the bid and establishing a purchase order for Ferguson Waterworks and the purchasing and delivery of store supplies for fiscal year 2018-19 in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents.
Sommo, second. Discussion? Same, same as the previous item, Mister City Manager, could you just give a quick summary?
This resolution authorizes the city, uh, to accept the bid of Ferguson Waterworks and, uh, for the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar amount for the purpose in delivery of store supplies needed by the water department, uh, so they can have this, these items on stock, uh, in their warehouse during this current fiscal year. Ferguson Water Supplies, um, uh, they replace water mains and spec, they use it for inspection, repairing, uh, gate valves, fire hydrants, meter boxes and covers, and provide other services and supplies for, uh, the domestic water delivered by the department.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the city council, City of Compton, rescinding Resolution twenty-four seven eighty-nine and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Progressive Land Clearing for demolition of structures and abatement at eleven oh five South Alameda Street in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Sommo, second. Discussion? Mister City Manager?
Uh, mayor and council, this is, this item is being brought to you, uh, again, as we were, uh, eleven oh five South Alameda is the former, uh, trash company that's owned by the city. Um, as you guys recall, we were going to demolish that particular building and a week before it was scheduled to be demolished, uh, the building was set ablaze and almost completely burned down. Um, AQMD came in and did an inspection, uh, there was some asbestos, um, found inside the building prior to the burning, and then the burning of the building combined with the, the, the fire being put out caused the spreading of the asbestos. Uh, AQMD has a, uh, process called a Procedure Five. It's an approved plan, uh, to clean up and, uh, the material containing asbestos and, uh, while, uh, protecting the public health. Um, to follow that particular plan, we had to increase the, uh, dollar amount for the demolition, um, and there'll be, uh, probably, there will be some additional costs in terms of containment of the particular, um, disturbed asbestos in that structure. But, uh, we really want to get that building torn down, uh, and Thomas Demolition was, um, uh, gracious enough to actually, um, have the capil, the capacity and the ability to, uh, provide us with that service on demo, demolishing this location for us, but we did have to increase the cost, uh, from its original amount.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is a resolution of the city council, City of Compton, amending the 2018-19 fiscal year budget, authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the California Board of State and Community Corrections, accepting five hundred thousand dollars in California Violence Intervention and Prevention Program, grant funds and Vol, and Volunteers of America of Los Angeles in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars for implementation of the California Violence Intervention and Prevention Program.
Sommo, second. Discussion? Uh, Mister City Manager, could you just give a quick summary of what this partnership will entail for the members of the public?
Mayor and council, the purpose of the CalVIP program, um, we're partnering with Volunteers of America in this particular program, and it's to develop and implement a programming, uh, for at-risk, uh, transition-aged youth, or TAs. Um, those are youth between eighteen and twenty-five years old. Uh, the city's program includes the com, a comprehensive employment and life skills training program, uh, prepare youths for, youth for stable, independent lives outside of gang involvement, and, uh, we plan to service approximately three hundred, uh, kids in that particular group. Um, so we hope that, uh, we'd like to kick this off as soon as possible. Our first report is due in November, um, and the program, uh, should start, uh, almost immediately as soon as you guys pass this particular, uh, item.
Thank you, Mister City Manager. Any discussion or questions?
This is a grant that the city got or is this from the general fund?
This is a grant, uh, application that we partner with, uh, Volunteers of America on.
Okay, and it's gonna put kids to work or programs for the kids?
It's a job readiness program.
So, in September is what we had before with, uh, Carrilink when we used to hire the kids for the summer?
Uh, I believe so, I was, I'm not sure.
Oh, this is just job training?
Yeah, this is, this is actually for job training and, uh, learning how to live outside of gang involvement, gives them life skills.
Got it.
Uh, do you have to be a Compton resident in order to participate?
I think you, on this particular grant, we're gonna require the residents to be here in Compton.
So, hopefully, we can find a city newspaper to advertise, to get the word out. Um, that, that's a good program. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Just congratulations to Volunteers for America on another successful grant application in partnership with the city. They're a model partner, and, um, they continue to deliver results, so congratulations to you all.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is a resolution of the city council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional service contract for federal legislative and advocacy services for, for fiscal years 2018-19 and 2019-2020.
Sommo, second. Discussion? Uh, Mister City Manager, could you summarize this item and then also clarify why you do not have a recommendation for a firm?
Um, mayor and council, this item, uh, a federal lobbyist works in very similar, uh, methods to our state lobbyists. They, um, they look for opportunities, funding opportunities at the federal level, um, through the federal appropriations. They, uh, liaison and contact the congressional staff, uh, and, and the aides, uh, in Washington, DC, and work with our staff, particularly Public Works, uh, and perhaps the Planning Department, and, um, securing funds from, at the federal level to assist the city in such, such things as goods transportation, uh, and roadway improvement. Um, there were, we went out for competitive bid and I put these, uh, in a matrix so that, uh, the council could see the services offered. Um, two of the services are very, very similar, uh, in not only in price but also in service. Cadish Associates and Associates, as well as the Madison Group. Lobbyet is a, a firm that allows the mayor and council to select, um, and staff to select, um, sort of a cafeteria style where they can, uh, tier their services and ask for more or less, um, and it provides the city council with an opportunity to, um, perhaps control their, their spending on that if they, if they so choose. Um, we did not make a staff recommendation because, uh, right now, we currently have, uh, Cadish and Associates, uh, however, we believe it's the council's pleasure on who they would like to select. All things being equal, it's, it's very difficult to make any decision, distinction between the three.
I'd like to make a recommendation for Cadish and Associates. Uh, we just brought them on, uh, February one, January. Cecil.
I second.
Discussion?
Um, I started going through and taking a look at it, and I don't know anything about, uh, having any information on Lobbyet, but I took a look at some of the things that they were providing, and they really go into, especially in Tier Five, they talk about, uh, now what type of PAC they're setting up, I'm not sure, but it appear, I, I would assume that had to be something dealing with the city. Mister, uh, City Manager, do you have any, any information regarding that?
Tier Five is you're referring, referring to the Lobbyet, uh, contract and setting up a political, political action committee that's within applicable laws and regulations, maintaining political action committee reporting. Um, so, um, I've never used a lobby for a political action committee, uh, so I'm not exactly sure, um, where the council would use, where they would use them and when they would use them.
I'm trying to, I was trying to get, you know, that's what I was asking, because I didn't quite understand how this PAC would be, uh, effective. How, with this PAC that they're talking about setting up, is this something that's gonna benefit the city or how is that done? Or do you have any idea?
So, it looks like what Lobbyet does is, um, use a strategy for a political action committee to identify appropriate events, um, and, uh, and attend those events as necessary to lobby members of Congress or people on the Hill, um, in DC for interests, uh, that are, uh, of interest to the city.
So, then basically, they're still doing the same thing as the other?
As any other, as the other lobbyists, right. But using political action committee funds, right.
Thank you. Just wanna make sure.
Why would, why would you want to use city funds to, for political action committee? It makes no sense. That makes no sense at all to me. We're gonna pay someone to go to political fundraisers and stuff?
I'm just asking for clarification, because I wanna make sure I understood what they were doing.
That makes no sense at all.
So, I, I, my comment is, I'd just like to say that this is the process that I'd like to see as followed, even though we've identified this as a professional service contract, we still went out and bid and got three bids. Thank you, Mister City Manager.
Um, I just have one question, Mister City Manager. What is the distinction between this lobbying firm and the state lobbying firm that we approved last week? Um, the state lobbying firm was also an existing vendor or contract with the city, yet there was a recommendation made, and so I'm just trying to figure out what the distinction between this contract and the contract from last week.
So, the state lobbyists, uh, last week, uh, we have a longer relationship with them, and we've worked with them for a number of years, and we were able to point out in that staff report, things that they'd actually, uh, performed for us, and they're actually working with us at, uh, as a part of our, um, state audit response team. So, um, with, uh, any one of these firms, we, we haven't, at least in my tenure, we have not had a federal lobbyist, so there's not a track record to establish one over the other as there was with, um, uh, Strategic Counsel, and Strategic Counsel was also the lowest bid too.
Okay. Thank you.
But, Madam Mayor, even though, uh, when you, uh, bringing, bringing people in and their contracts, shouldn't staff still try to do some research to get some information in regards to the people so that you guys can possibly give us a recommendation since, uh, in, in, in researching and looking at those type of, of the different companies when you do that? Would that be staff responsibility to, to make sure that they actually take a look at all of the companies and do a more of a comparison to it so that you really could make a, uh, recommendation to, to the council?
Council, uh, the reason that we put together this matrix that you see is part of that research that we did, uh, because we wanted you guys to, uh, really take a look at all the services that are offered by each particular, uh, firm. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, um, Cadish and Associates and the Madison Group, uh, offer very similar services. Um, the Lobbyet Group, uh, offers the same services but in a tiered structure.
That's why I was looking at, it's the same thing, pretty much, except for this PAC thing that they're talking about, whatever that is.
Uh, Councilman Galvin, did you recommend a?
Yeah, I mean, you seconded, huh?
Right, so there's a margin for error. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Hmm, right now, I'm going to, uh, we have three different companies here, so right now, I still cannot take a look and make a determination between those three, because, like I said, it'll appear that everybody seems to be doing the same thing, and I, I do have a concern as to why staff is not making a recommendation to this, uh, council in regard to these three. So, right now, my, uh, I would have to abstain on it.
Mayor Brown? Um, yes, and Mister City Manager, I'd just like a, a quarterly report on the professional services to ensure from both lobbying firms that they're performing, um, because we, we pay a hefty amount, um, for lobbying services on an annual basis, and I would expect some kind of report on at least a quarterly basis. Thank you. From both, from both firms, I just-
Yeah, and, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilwoman McCoy, it, it would really be helpful that if we could kind of get together and when you go to DC, you can take some of our wishes or even bring back some of the things that, that they think that the city might be interested in.
Absolutely. That's a lot of things that we intend to contribute to the Black Caucus, not only for the need of, to get the opportunity for your lobbying firms, as well as your congressional groups, to try to, to see if the city can operate for us. So, I'm really, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Item number eighteen is a resolution of the city council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional service contract with, did I just do that? I don't, I don't have that. Item number eighteen is a resolution of the city council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a, a three-year street sweeping service agreement with and establish a purchase order for clean street sweeping services for citywide street sweeping services in the amount of one million, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-six cents.
Sommo, second. Discussion?
Yeah, um, I have a question for the city manager. Um, did the bid request specify that, uh, we use C and G trucks?
I'm sorry, sir.
Did the bid request specify that we use clean natural gas trucks?
No.
Um, is the, a company here the one that, uh, you're recommending?
Uh, I don't believe so.
And you're only recommending them because they're the lowest bidder, right?
Correct.
Well, I'm under the impression that one of the, the other persons is making a one point five million dollar, uh, investment in the city of Compton by, uh, bringing all brand-new trucks to the city to do the street sweeping. Are any of the other companies gonna do that?
Is that a true?
No, that's a part, no.
And I think that we're investing millions and millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars through, uh, Measure P and state grants and stuff to repave our streets, and, uh, I think our residents deserve the best. I think we deserve the best services, uh, that we can, uh, give them in the city of Compton. Um, as a father of a two-year-old son, uh, I believe it's in, I wanna make sure that my kid is able to grow up in a community where the air is not so polluted, and I think by having, uh, clean natural gas trucks and, uh, brand-new trucks for the city of Compton, I think that, uh, we should go with that one. So, I would like to make a recommendation for Nationwide Environmental Services, and I'll make that a motion.
Sommo, second. Discussion? Uh, Mister City Manager, could you just give a summary of the bids that were actually received and whether or not, um, the second company Nationwide Environmental included within their bid, the investment with the new trucks?
Yes, mayor and council, uh, the bids were put out, uh, Public Works released a request for proposals, uh, for the services from qualified companies on May sixteenth, May twenty-third, and May thirtieth, and June sixth, uh, tw- two thousand eighteen, uh, in the bulletin. The, uh, city proposed the agreements for a three-year term. Uh, on the seventh, the department, uh, received a total of three proposals from these qualified street vendors. One thing about Nationwide is that Nationwide is including brand-new vehicles in their proposal that they submitted. That is something that none of the other companies provided. The other companies spoke of newer vehicles, but not brand-new vehicles, nor clean-air vehicles.
So, this company provides clean-air vehicles?
It's my understanding they're bringing in natural gas or low-emission vehicles, as well as they're going to be newer vehicles.
Is that included in their bid response in writing?
Yes, and there is a representative from Nationwide here also.
Is there a reason why staff recommended Clean Street over Nationwide, given that information?
Because the contracting rules compel us to suggest the lowest, most responsive bidder.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
So, between the two of the contracts, the Clean Streets and Nationwide, there's a difference of two-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars. Now, last, I think a couple of weeks ago, when this was on the agenda, I think there's like, it was a three-hundred-dollar difference, three-hundred-thousand-dollar difference, I'm sorry. What happened as far as the bids was concerned? Can anyone actually elaborate on that and explain that? Because the bid was for nine-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars, now it's eight-hundred-and-sixty. Could you tell me what is the difference, what caused the decrease in this contract? Can that be it?
I will call the Public Works Director who prepared the staff report, Mr. Johnson.
And while he makes his way up here, you know, I just want to be extra careful when it comes to contracts, and especially contracts of this size in light of the audit. I have no problem contracting with the firm that buy higher-quality vehicles. City Manager is well aware that I've myself made many complaints with the existing firm with not using water and the quality of vehicles in the city. However, I think the process needs to be followed correctly. So, if our barometer is going to be that we require our bidders to have natural gas vehicles, that should be reflective in the bid package, so that we can properly have a matrix and make that recommendation, if that's something that the council as a whole sees as a requirement.
Was it in the bid package?
Well, we have the Mr. Johnson, so he can provide more clarity on the bid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. The clean-air requirement is a requirement by law. So, all the vehicles that are being deployed in any one of the fleets are clean-air vehicles.
So, all of the?
All three bidders submitted clean-air vehicles.
Okay, that provides clarity. So, is there any distinction between the natural gas vehicles and the clean-air vehicles that are being?
They're all natural gas.
They're all natural gas?
Yes.
Okay.
So, excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Johnson, the street sweepers that are circulating in the City of Compton now are natural gas vehicles?
Correct. They're required by law.
Oh, okay.
And what year do you think natural gas vehicles were marketed? How old are these vehicles that they're using, you think?
The useful life of the natural gas vehicle as a street sweeper is eight to nine years.
So, when did the law?
When did the law kick in?
Specify that they had to use natural gas?
This, this would... This would, this would, you know, I don't know exactly when the line, but it's been around several decades. They provided the city, at one time, when the city went back into the street sweeping business, the AQMD provided them a grant to pay for the natural gas vehicle. The difference between a diesel and a natural gas vehicle, at the time, clean diesel was not available. And we did that in two thousand and ten. So, it's been around for several decades, this requirement, is my first estimate.
That's surprising, I would have never figured those vehicles would be natural.
Thank you, and so, Mr. Johnson, it's your, it is your recommendation, after reviewing the bids, that Clean Street is the most responsive bidder, the lowest most responsive bidder?
Yeah, according to contracting law, we're required to recommend the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
I do want to clarify, Mr. Johnson, in I've seen Nationwide here, I just want to clarify the dollar amount. Because when you look at the bid sheets or the analysis, the analysis number's a little bit different. Is the dollar amount eight-sixty, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand, or is it nine-eighty-seven?
This is, this is not consistent with the latest information that I reviewed.
Right, so it's, what I see here is nine-eighty-seven-twelve, that was the contract. So, that's what it should read, nine-eighty-seven-twelve, and Clean Street is still six-fifty-two, seven-three-three.
I made a motion, and there was a second. I would like to call for the vote, if there's no more discussion.
I think, Mr. City Manager, were you clarifying the price?
Yes, and so, the price is actually nine-eighty-seven?
It's nine-eighty-seven?
Nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand twelve, zero twelve.
Thank you. Per year?
Yes.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
This is, this is on the amended motion, amended motion for Nationwide. Counselor versus Zarita?
Yes.
Galvain?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
No.
Madam Brown?
No. Thank you. Counselwoman, actually, Counselwoman Galvain?
Yeah. Counselwoman Zarita, go first, please?
Oh, sure.
Because I can gather my thoughts.
No problem. Counselwoman Zarita?
Um, thank you, Madam Brown. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out Saturday to the ribbon-cutting of the refurbished Seabree Park on El Segundo and Compton Avenue. It was a great success. We partnered, the City of Compton partnered with the school district, and also Urban Youth Major League Baseball Academy. So, our T-ball field is back in full effect. You all should go out and take a look at the park. It's phase one. We still have a few things to do to the park. Unfortunately, we didn't get our splash pad and a few of the other things that we had initially incorporated in our design. But, all in all, I think it was very, very nice. And I want to thank School Board President Makai Ali and Superintendent Darren Brawley for helping to make it a huge success, and everybody that came out. Your Tonda Price Foundation had tons of backpacks. We didn't run out of anything. Helping Hands had plenty of food, fruit giveaways. It was just a really, really nice event. And my colleagues here came and enjoyed the celebration. So, once again, thank you all. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting my vision and the vision of District One, and supporting the development of Seabree Park. So, thank you all for that, and thank you, City Manager and your staff, for doing an outstanding job. Then I want to remind everyone about my next event, the Walk for a Cure, which is October thirteenth, and we're changing venues. So, we'll be at Centennial High School, which is in the first district at Central and El Segundo. The reason we're changing is because we've kind of outgrown the Willa Brook Walk, and then parking was kind of a challenge. Once the school district redid their fields, we could no longer park on their grass. So, we're changing to Centennial High School. So, all of you come out, seven AM, that's October thirteenth, and that will be our seventh annual Walk for a Cure. So, come out and join us. And then, I just have, I have to say this, and I have to get it off of me so that I can feel better about myself and actually sleep better at night. Last week, I voted on an item that I shouldn't have voted on. I voted on a budget amendment for two thousand seventeen-eighteen, which that budget no longer exists. So, prior to that, maybe three weeks before that, Councilman Galvain and I asked for a professional courtesy to give us a week to go over the budget, and members of the council said that if they didn't approve the budget, that the city couldn't function, because two thousand seventeen-eighteen budget would sunset at the end of the month. But now, we making budget amendments to that budget. So, I need to know, I want to bring the item back, so I can reconsider my vote, and I don't know exactly how the city manager, the city clerk, or the city attorney wants to go about bringing that item back, because I need to reconsider my vote, because I just, I don't think that budget exists, and I don't think you can make an amendment to a budget that has no longer existed. Mr. City Manager?
Counselor, I believe there were two items that, of concern, and you can bring those back. We, I spoke to the city attorney about your concerns that you mentioned at that meeting, and we can, you can bring those two items back. So, we'll bring those back to you first, first part of September.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And, you know, it's just sometimes you need to follow your right mind. I need to practice what I preach, because sometimes I say, when you think something ain't right, it probably ain't. So, it may not be something wrong to y'all, but I just don't feel good with it. And then, also, I'd like to close in the memory of Darryl Grimes, who was a longtime employee in the City of Compton. He worked, as far as I remember him, he worked in parking enforcement, and he passed away. I don't, do we have his funeral services yet?
We have a subsequent need item tonight also, that I forgot to mention.
Okay.
For a repeat, but yes.
So, you will make announcements of his services, Tana? Okay, so when it comes down to you. Tana McCoy will give the funeral services for Darryl Grimes. And then, also, another very dear friend, Carter, in Building and Safety. His mother passed away, I think, yesterday. Her name is Dorothy Louis Carter. I'd like to also close in her memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselwoman Galvain?
Yeah, I also had the honor to attend my colleague, Councilwoman Janice Zarita's backpack giveaway, and it was a great event out there. It was good to see all these kids coming from Compton, going, getting school supplies. Her and the school board member, Satria Zarita, and school president, Makai Ali, put on a great event. I seen little Armani working her butt off over there to make that event the great success that it was. So, I want to congratulate you guys and your whole team on that. Major League Baseball was there, they gave away free food. It was really, really good event, and it was good to see my colleagues, Madam Brown and Councilwoman McCoy there as well, supporting our colleagues. That was good. I also got to attend the open house for Domino Cardone in my council district, another great event where they gave out backpacks to the kids, free food for everybody, live music, the band. And it's a real partnership that we have with the World Oil right here in the City of Compton. I know they team up with Councilwoman McCoy to do the creek cleanup, and they always support the events that I have in my district as well. So, I'm lucky that we're able to have them here. It was a great day, it was a great Saturday in Compton, a busy Saturday in Compton, right?
Yeah.
And I want to invite everybody, this is our last meeting, so I want to invite everybody to my backpack giveaway, which will be Saturday, August eleventh. I was going to do it at Luters Park, but I may change the location. I'll post it on my social media, and I'll put it on the city website and the city TV channel. But we're going to do backpacks, and this will be my sixth year, probably, my sixth year doing it already. So, we give out backpacks, school supplies, haircuts, eye exams, eyeglasses for the kids that need glasses. So, it's a really big event. It's one of my signature four events that I do throughout the year, so I hope everybody can come out and support it. Also, I wondered if the city manager can give a report on the Wilson Park Basketball Gym? I know that there was an RFP, and I know that it closed. Do you have any idea when that item will be back? Because the gym is still locked, and I think that we need to work on that soon, so our kids can get back to playing in a safe environment.
They, they did the walkthrough on the ninth, and so, that item should be coming back the first part of, in the first meeting in September.
Okay. Also, months ago, and as recently as last week, and I keep asking every single week, I don't know who's doing, who's holding up the items. I don't know how items get on the city council agenda, because these, like, some weird items get on the agenda. When somebody recommends them, the next week, they're on the agenda. I've been requesting the city attorney, the council, to appoint our own city attorney for weeks. It still hasn't been brought back to the agenda. Mr. City Manager, can you let me know when that's going to come back? Also, I requested naming the Gonzalez Park Swimming Pool after former Councilwoman Dolores Zarita. I requested that months ago, and it hasn't been brought back to the city council. I requested a couple of other items. I think that it's wrong for, I'm going to just blame it on the city attorney, because he's holding up all the items. It's wrong for him to dictate what this body does and what this body doesn't do. And a perfect example of why the city council needs our own council is, last week, you know, it was really sad, the one-sided opinion that the city attorney gave us, which I think was wrong on resetting that letter. You know, the false information they gave, it was just ridiculous. And I think that, I want to ask again, I would like the item to be brought back for the council to appoint our own, our own general counsel. Can that item be brought back? If we have to call a special meeting, I would like to call it. If not, I would like it back in September.
Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
Mr. City Manager, if I misspeak, please let me know. The, number one, city manager is having difficulty writing a resolution replacing an elected official.
It's not replacing you.
If, if we can replace elected officials, I have suggestions as well. Not to take you out of your seat, just for my own business, we can have, switch out seats. So, you keep asking the manager to provide this resolution, and the manager can't write it, because he looked at the charter, he saw my duties, and he knows that I hold this seat until I don't. And that's the saying for every elected official up here. So, you can keep asking him for it, but he's not providing it, and we can just go back and forth. But until we all can be replaced, I'm not going to be replaced, because the citizens put me here.
Are you done?
I am.
All right. Well, you can clap all you want, but at the end of the day, we have one of the worst city attorneys in the state of California. I mean, every time we get sued, we lose every case, or settling a case for over a million dollars seems to be a victory in this city attorney's office. And you're right, if you could replace somebody, you probably would want to replace me, because I'm the guy that tries to hold you accountable for the job that you don't do, to be honest with you. And the charter says that the council has final say on all legal matters. So, I want to bring back the item for the council consideration to appoint our own counsel for the council. And I don't know why that's so tough to do. Put the decision in the body's hands.
So, let's do this, because I'm not done.
Okay.
Let's do evaluations of everybody. Let's talk about timeliness. Let's talk about attention to detail. Let's talk about, let's bring out a form, and let's go through the form for everybody, and let's give everybody grades. Because to just, for a non-attorney to tell me that my opinions are wrong, let's just open it up to the body. That's my suggestion.
Well, you remember the last time somebody tried to grade us. But, you know, this is not my argument, but I think, in our fairness, what the councilman is asking for is just someone that we can go to for an opinion, because Craig, you do not represent the council, you represent the people.
The, I'm not sure, but I don't... The, I'm not sure, but I don't believe the residents would be interested in using their tax dollars for council to have personal attorneys. I represent the city, and your business should be the city's. When your interests are different from the city's, you should have your own attorney. And I don't believe that taxpayer dollars should go for it. But, I'm not stopping the city manager from writing it. If he wants to write it, he can write it. He can put it on sire. That's our, um, software for agenda items. It will then go to the controller. The controller will review it for the correct fund numbers, and if it's budgeted. Then it will come to my desk, and I will review it. And I will make sure it's consistent with the charter. If it is, it makes it to the body. As of yet, I haven't seen the resolution. So, I'm not the one holding it up.
I don't think the residents would want, uh, us to be losing millions of dollars every week, every month in lawsuits that your office can't handle. Um, secondly, uh, I'm gonna make the request again for the city manager to bring the item back. If Craig wants to hold it up longer than he's holding it up right now, that's fine. Uh, I would like to request that item to be brought back. I would also like to know, when was the, when does the new resolution that this body passed, uh, making the mayor pro temp, uh, at the will of the council, when does that ordinance take effect? I've been asking that question for two to three weeks. I still haven't got a straight answer. Last answer I got from you, you said the city attorney doesn't know yet. So, if you can let me know right now, or, uh, send me a text tomorrow or something, I would really appreciate that. Cecil? Yeah, I was asking you.
That's, uh, it's thirty days after you guys did your last one.
Do you know what the date was?
I, I don't recall the date.
Can you find out?
It's, it's actually gonna be sometime in September, I believe, so.
Why, we approved it in June.
Uh, end of June, I don't recall.
Yeah, we approved it in June. July, we're at the end of July now?
Um, I think it was approved on the twenty-sixth, but I'm not sure.
So, July twenty-sixth, thirty days, July twenty-sixth?
Today's July twenty-fourth, so it must have been June twenty-sixth. Today's July twenty-fourth, so it was June twenty-sixth that was approved?
I believe so.
So, July twenty-sixth, if the council wanted to call a special meeting, they could.
You're asking?
Yeah, I'm asking you. Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, and that's the end of my, uh, my comments.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as the, um, city manager said, we did, uh, did ask for a, um, request for, um, fee waiver for the services for Mr. Grimes, um, for August third. We won't have another council meeting, so it was to be considered as a subsequent need. They're requesting from one to six P.M. And the services will be on August third. Um, the church has not been determined yet. It will be at ten A.M., but they haven't actually, um, it's between two churches, so they will let us know. So, as soon as I know, I'll send everybody out an email to know when the services are. But, um, do we have to make a motion to consider this item as a subsequent need?
Yes.
Yes.
So, more?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Zerita?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
On the item?
So, more?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Excuse me, roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Zerita?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Okay, now, now further, um, I just want to say, I am, the, the traffic signal on Alondra and Central has been out. Um, it's a result of someone, um, knocking the signal down, and, um, there was a hit and run at that scene. It was, it's been out since July the eighth. I have received numerous calls about, um, the safety of that, um, location, and there has been several accidents. We are aware, we are working on it. The, um, Public Works Director is in the process of locating a signal. It was one of the major signals, so it requires a little more detail than the regular traffic signals. And so, it could take up to ninety-plus days. We're in the process of putting some other safety, um, stop signs. We have stop signs out there, but people are not adhering, and the light is flashing. But we're trying to do whatever we can to make that intersection safe until we can get that lights replaced. So, I do apologize, it was a result of a hit and run. And it's not the city that has put it out of order. It was hit, and we now have to work on that. And, let's see, I actually, I had a, um, a homeless outreach and resource fair on this past Friday. And I had, um, organizations, different organizations who came out to provide services for the homeless. And I must say that, um, it was a very, very heartwarming event. Um, Volunteers of America, they were there to assist us. They actually, um, transported homeless back and forth. We had the mobile showers there. We had someone from the Department of Motor Vehicle there to service them, because one of the issues that they have is they don't have identification. We had someone from the L.A., um, Public Defender's Office who were assisting with getting, um, just some barriers that the homeless have as, when they're trying to get sheltered. And when they don't have proper I.D., when they don't have, um, um, they don't have, um, proper I.D., they don't have, they have, um, what, they have warrants and that kind of thing. So, we had someone there assisting them with that. And staff was there, staff, um, we actually barbecued and provided meals for them. And, um, we also did, um, clothing exchange as well as the vaccination, hepatitis vaccinations. So, I just want to thank everyone who came out to participate. It was really good, and I really appreciate you, all the assistance that you provided. And I did attend the, um, park, um, grand opening, and you guys did a good job. I just want to say thank you. I know it took a lot of perseverance, Councilwoman Zerita, but it's finally open. And so, thank you, the, I've had a lot of positive, um, comments on the actual location. Some people who have gone by and said they just couldn't wait to see it actually back in business. Um, the Alondra Walk Park, I'm requesting, Mr. City Manager, that, um, Parks and Rec do a walkthrough over there. It needs to do some maintenance. There's a few, um, holes there that, you know, could cause problems for people who are actually walking, and they could hurt themselves. So, could you please, um, do a walkthrough over there? And, um, let's see, uh, that's all I have. Adjourn again in memory of, um, Darryl Grimes, Dorothy Carter. Also, I want to adjourn in memory of the family of Tia Carter. She lost, um, nine family members in that duck boat accident. And it was just in Missouri, but that's just horrific. She lost, you know, her entire family. And so, I want to adjourn in memory. And then Huey P. Jackson. I want to adjourn in memory of him also. And also, uh, again, the city to village outreach for the people, that benefit the people in Nigeria. If you have donations, um, you can contact my office, and we can let you know where you can drop them off. And that's all of my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy.
Are they, what, accepting clothes, food, money, for Nigeria?
Yes, they're accepting, um, they have hygiene kits that they're preparing to take over, or they're accepting donations, yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Zerita?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Brown, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor Brown. Um, on the twenty-fifth, which is tomorrow, I will be hosting my quarterly business roundtable, and, uh, from ten A.M. to twelve P.M. at the Dollar High Community Center. I'm inviting all businesses to please come out and be a part of this. This is an opportunity for you to network with local businesses and meet law enforcement and city staff. And a light lunch will be served. Uh, also, um, I would be hosting my third annual senior summer luau on Friday, July the twenty-seventh, at the Dollar High Community Center from eleven A.M. to two P.M. Come out and enjoy a scrumptious catered meal, entertainment, and lively music. For more information, please contact the staff at the Dollar High Community Center at three one zero six zero five five six eight eight. That's three one zero six zero five five six eight eight. And, uh, I also had my, um, homeless summit, which was on Thursday the nineteenth. Was Thursday the nineteenth? Thursday the nineteenth. And I really want to thank, uh, the city manager and a lot of the staff people for working so diligently. But I also want to thank my, uh, liaison DJ DeHart for really doing a, a great job there as far as trying to pull, help pull all this together. We had quite a few vendors, uh, people that came out that actually provide services, 'cause this was about bringing the people together in one room that actually provides services, uh, to the homeless population, and to see if we could come up with some strategies and ideas as to how we can really address this issue. So, we had, uh, city, one city in Long Beach, which has done a great job there as far as working with this, uh, population of people. And, uh, we had a lot of, uh, path, and we had the Legal Aid Society that was there also in the house to work with us and everything. We had the, uh, District Attorney and the, uh, the, the Public Defender's Office there as well, in order to share information with us as far as, uh, how they, uh, working as far as, um, when it comes to them, trying to help them as far as making sure they, uh, expunge their records and everything. So, it was really a great meeting. And I am looking forward to a follow-up meeting regarding that, because I don't believe in just having a meeting and leaving it. I believe that we need to follow up and try to find out, get more information as to where we are, where we're going, and things like that, so that we can continue to move forward and continue to stay, uh, together when it comes to this, uh, you know, come to working with this population of people. Because all of us are really having a tough time here trying to address that issue. And so, I, like I said, I, I thank all of you for coming out, because we had a, the meeting, it turned out to be a wonderful event. And I really want to thank all of the, the people that came out and participated. Uh, now, Mr. City Manager, I did receive a call today, and it had to do with the, uh, Par Three Golf Course. And I know that we have some lawnmowers that's down. Could you please tell me, uh, give me an update, uh, as to when we think those lawnmowers will be fixed? Because riding is creating a problem with a lot of the, um, uh, people that's trying to use the golf course, because the grass is too high. And so, I would just, if you know, if you could just give me an update as when we can possibly have that taken care of? Because I hate to leave them, because it's one club. They have about fifty, a little over fifty people that's a part of that club, and they come out, and they've really been using that golf course. So, I hate to, uh, lose them, uh, there, there.
I just spoke to the city, um, mechanic today. We're waiting on a part for the lawnmower. It's a carburetor part or something for the engine. Uh, it's on order. Um, I will get a final arrival date tomorrow, when we can get a better, uh, time when they're gonna ship it out. I'm not sure if we're waiting for the part to come in from the Midwest or back east or what, but there's a part that we're waiting.
How many lawnmowers do we have out that's not working at this time? That's, that's used over there?
Uh, there's a gang mower. I, I don't know how many are out completely. So, the, the gang mower is the larger mower to, as you guys know, the golf course is very large.
Yes.
If you use the smaller mowers, if, we, we couldn't do it. They, they just don't have the capacity to do it. So, we need the, the larger sit-down rider mower that I just saw in the pallet over in the city yard, uh, last week.
Okay, well, could you please give me an update? Because they were mentioning to me today that the putting green mower is out. And which means that it's supposed to be used for the putting green area, and they're having a problem there because they can't use that area. So, if you could please give me an update and let me know where we are, how many we have out, and, and where we are as far as trying to get those things fixed. I really would appreciate it. And, uh, also, I will be, uh, co-hosting the Family Health Fair on August the eleventh, uh, from eight A.M. to twelve P.M. I really, uh, invite all the parents and the, uh, students to please come out, because we'll be giving away, uh, backpacks and things there as well. So, please come out and join us there. There would be, uh, and I'm gonna tell you where it's right there. On Compton Boulevard, at the Town Center, next to, uh, the, in the parking lot in front of the Phallus, um, store that sell, uh, uniforms. So, it's gonna be in that area. So, if you're going down Compton Boulevard, you can't miss it. It's right there. So, please come out and join us. And, uh, I know they usually have a lot of, uh, health, uh, people there to actually, uh, give when it comes to the immunization of the children, and also taking a look at the health screens in, uh, the, uh, dust and everything. So, please come out and join us. That's gonna be August the eleventh. And I have another announcement, and I'm asking, we're asking you to please save the date. That is a Women's March, uh, it's, it's really a rally. And the South Bay is reaching Beyond Transformation Pledge to Vote Rally. It's gonna be a rally to, uh, get people to actually, uh, come out and get involved as far as voting. And that is gonna be, uh, Saturday, uh, September the twenty-second, uh, from ten A.M. to two P.M. And it will be held in Torrance at the, uh, Columbia Park. And that address is four zero four five one hundred and ninety-three there in Torrance. So, uh, so it's a lot of different organizations that's coming together to actually put this rally on, and really, it just, to really just, to try to, um, get, uh, a lot of communities really, uh, involved as far as voting is concerned. So, we asking the community, please come out and join us. Uh, the National Women Political Caucus will be there. We are a part of this, uh, event. So, I'm just inviting all of you, all of you to come out and please join us in that event. And, and, uh, Mr. City Manager, I have gotten a lot of calls from the community over and over again in regarding, uh, the conduct of us as councilpeople. And when I say us, because I sit on this, I serve on this council. And, uh, I'm asking that a policy be brought back and for the, and to address the code of conduct for us as councilpeople, as elected officials, not just councilpeople, but elected officials, period. And so, I'm hoping that you can bring, uh, give me a date possibly that that can come back sometime in September, when we come back after our recess here in August. And, uh, so, I would like to talk, we can discuss that later, if you don't mind. So, that's, those are my comments for this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zerita. I just have a couple comments. Um, one, I did have the opportunity to attend the Seabreeze Park, um, ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday. And I was happy to see a project completed by Parks and Rec and with the combination of funding that was utilized. But I did have some questions about the scope of work versus what was actually delivered. And so, when I think of an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar park, I have an expectation for, um, additional amenities. And it seemed like the project, in my opinion, was incomplete. I brought this to the attention of the city manager. And I'd like to see the scope of work for Seabreeze Park that the council approved in comparison to what was actually delivered. I know when I took a walk of the grounds, I spoke with Councilwoman McCoy as well. Um, and we just want to make sure that what was delivered was actually what we paid for. And I'd like to receive that information by next week, please. Thank you. Um, also, one of the, um, actually the sponsor for the backpacks, which was a really nice event. I was surprised to see Compton Unified School District, um, so prevalent. But the Yotunde Price Resource Center donated the backpacks. But the Yotunde Price Resource Center donated the backpacks. And so it's really great to see community partners continuing to support the community as a whole. So it was really great to see that. Also had an opportunity to attend the World Oil Recycling Community Festival Open House. And it was a great event as usual. Centennial High School Band showed up and did a wonderful job as usual. And the event was well-attended. Also, Mr. City Manager, could you just identify, who is the project manager for Seabreeze Park?
The project manager was the Parks and Rec Director.
Okay. Is Marvin back there?
Marvin is actually, he's, he's out ill.
Oh, okay. And then also, I want to follow up on one additional item regarding the community center, reconciling the events with the actual funds collected for the community center. I requested this information over a month ago. And I'd like to see the reconciliation done. When can this be completed, Mr. City Manager?
I see Mr. Aubrey Ralph back there. Aubrey, can we have that back by the end of the week? Events versus revenues for Dollar High? Okay, thanks.
And also include the dates, please, and the times. Thank you, thank you. Yes. It could be this fiscal year.
Just Aubrey, this fiscal year.
I'm sorry? And, and the last one as well? Councilwoman McCoy, we'd like to see the last one as well.
This fiscal year and last fiscal year.
Thank you. Lastly, I am expecting my first child and I will take a little time off to recover. Thank you, Wendell. Recover after the birth, but I will be at council meetings. And so you all can expect to see me as much as possible to fulfill my service here. It is two thousand eighteen, there are a lot of conveniences that are available. And so I will continue to serve, but not to the same intensity, obviously. But you all can expect to see me at council meetings as much as possible. Thank you. And we will now actually recess in the memory of Darryl Grimes, Dorothy Lewis Carter, the family of Tia Carter, and also Huey Pete Jackson. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
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 Mayor Brown.
Yes, thank you. Yes, go for it. It is Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, seven fifty-seven PM. And we will now begin the governing body of the successor agency meeting. Roll call?
Director Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane, McCoy, Sharif.
Yes.
Shepherdson Brown.
Yes.
You will now proceed forward to public comments on agenda and non-agenda matters, Ms. Joyce Kelly.
First off, let me just say, I think it's August the seventh is the first Tuesday of the month this National Night Out. So anyone who wants to talk or talk to the sheriff, the sheriff or the local police will have this all across the country. So if you could remind the people again, April the seventh, the first Tuesday in August is National Night Out. And it's over in the Gateway Town Center with Target.
You said April.
I'm sorry, August.
August seventh.
Thank you. I see on this agenda, you have closed session for Alondra Park. Is that Alondra Park, closed session? I want to know why is this a closed session? And, and this is public land, this is our land. This was promised as a park, so why do you have to go in closed session? This is my park. I don't want to put you on the line, Mr. City Attorney, because I see you can handle yourself. But why does it have to be in closed session to discuss the price and the terms of the park? The last we knew, the park was going to be a park. That property was going to be Alondra Regional Park. Now you guys got to come forth and bring the information to us and let us know that it's no longer going to be Alondra Regional Park. And I understand some of this property is going to have buildings on it, is that right? And the people who want it are going to dig down so far because of the contamination of the soil? We need to know, the people need to know. Some of this information I know, but the people around that area needs to know because I know a lot of people around that area has cancer. But think about it, have a good vacation.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Discussion or amendments? Roll call?
Director Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy, Sharif. Shepherdson Brown.
Yes.
Item number two is requests to schedule a workshop for presentations to develop successor agency-owned property at two fifty North Central Avenue, requesting that September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, at four thirty PM.
At four thirty PM?
It's a workshop?
Workshop.
I'll second.
I second, I do.
Um, discussion? Mr. City Manager or Home Office, well, the other city manager. Could you also just provide the process for the project approvals at that time with the workshop? Just what the next steps are for approving successor agency projects since the process has changed? Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Count, Director Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Shepherdson Brown.
Yes.
General Counsel.
Chair and board members, there's a closed session request, conference with real property negotiator. The address under consideration is two eight one five to two eight seven five West Alondra Boulevard and two nine zero one West Alondra Boulevard. Negotiating parties is Executive Secretary and Assistant City Manager, John W. Martin, under negotiations, price and terms pursuant to California Government Code five four nine five six point eight.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Director Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Yes.
Shepherdson Brown.
Yes.
Director comments?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Director Galvane?
No comments and I hope everybody has a good summer and I hope to see you guys back in September.
Thank you. Director Zarita?
Uh, no comments. See you September.
Director McCoy?
One announcement after that. If you watch Channel Seven News, Leslie Sykes is a hometown person and she will be broadcasting live tomorrow at four thirty AM. Four thirty AM at tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum over at the Compton Airport. So four thirty AM, she'll be set up broadcasting live. If you're interested, come on out.
Thank you. Director Sharif?
Uh, one announcement I did want to make, I just wanted to state about World Oil. I were able to, I was able to attend the event on Saturday. I got there late, but it was really nice, it was very well-attended. And they've been doing this for a while, so it's really great to see them continue. Invite the community to come out and participate and be a part of it, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a few announcements that include, first is the NHS Farmers Market, August fourth, from ten AM to two PM at the Center for Sustainable Communities. We also have the annual four hundred ways backpack giveaway and school giveaway, Saturday, August eighteenth, from ten to three PM at tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum. We also have the third annual Back to School Free Haircuts and Hairdos Community Events hosted by Kevin and Sahara Lyons, which are Compton residents and Super Bowl champion Jaron Johnson on August twelfth, two thousand eighteen. And the location is the Home Depot parking lot. So a big thank you to Home Depot for their partnership as well. And it will be getting started from nine AM to six PM. Also Supervisor Riley Thomas is celebrating the Willowbrook Library Grand Opening right next to the MLK Hospital, July thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, at ten AM. And also the Summer Campfire hosted by Community Nature Connection on August fourth and September first, so two different dates, from six to eight PM at the Compton Creek Natural Park. And that's located at nine four one West Cressy. And. I will, just to note, and I'll just ask the city manager if you could coordinate with our lobbyists to provide a report. But on Wednesday, Senator Kamala Harris introduced a bill that would help low-income residents and low-wage workers, including those in public housing, receive financial relief from the high cost of rent that many people face monthly. This bill will help ease rent burden by allowing qualified taxpayers to claim a refundable tax credit for the rent that they pay. In order to qualify, taxpayers must spend at least thirty percent of their gross income for the taxable year on their rent, including other amenities such as gas and electricity. For more information, you can visit senate.gov. And just want to remind staff, the Pocket Park located on Elm and Willowbrook is in need of maintenance still. May we have a motion to adjourn? Excuse me, recess, thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call?
Director Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Shepherdson Brown.
Yes, thank you. Okay. May we have a, excuse me, may we have a motion to reconvene the Compton City Council meeting?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Yes. We will now have a report out from closed session from our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. We are returning from closed session. If I can get my. The discussion was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation present in closed session was city council without Councilman Galvane. The discussion surrounded Blair versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number BC six seven four three three zero pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine A. No reportable action given in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And also before we adjourn, Mr. City Manager, I know there are a few expired leases in city facilities that the council needs to consider, so if you can bring those back for council consideration the first meeting in September, any expired leases that we need to consider? Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I want to take the time before we leave because I want to thank Alita Gowan. Ms. Gowan went out and she really was helping me with this event for Deidra. She made sure I did everything that I was supposed to do because we didn't want Deidra to have to order her own certificate, a plaque and everything. So she was ordering it for me, she was telling me who to call. She really kept me on task to make sure I got things done. So Alita, I really want to thank you, you were very helpful, thank you so much. And I meant to say that earlier and really kind of forgot, so I said, let me tell you now before we leave.
That's beautiful, she's always a willing angel behind the scenes.
Yes, she is. And you do.
May we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Roll call?
Councilperson McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
One more.
We will now reconvene the governing body of the successor agency meeting. May we have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Roll call?
Director McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Shepherdson Brown.
Yes, we will now have a report out from our general counsel.
The successor agency board had a closed session dealing with conference with real property negotiator. The property in question is two eight one five to two eight seven five West Alondra Boulevard and two nine zero one West Alondra Boulevard. Negotiating parties, Executive Secretary, Assistant City Manager with John W. Martin, under negotiation, price and terms pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. No reportable action taken in this matter and the same attendance as the city council closed session.
Thank you.
And that's it.
May we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Director McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Shepherdson Brown.
Yes, thank you.